Five, four, three, two, one. Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the South St. Paul School Board Meeting, Monday, November 23rd, 2020. We are back to virtual again. Lisa, would you please take the role?
Inspector Walker.
Yes, we're back to virtual and all the things that we did wrong before.
Inspector Lallaberty.
Here.
Inspector Aaron.
Here.
Inspector Felton.
Here.
Inspector Diaz.
Here.
And Chair McClellan.
Here.
And Inspector Bjorkland is absent. We have six present at 6:03.
Thank you. First off, I'm looking for approval for the meeting agenda and minutes. The school board meeting agenda, November 23rd, 2020. The committee of the whole meeting minutes, November 9th, 2020. School board meeting minutes, November 9th, 2020. And special school board meeting minutes, November 12th, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
And a second.
Second.
Lisa, will you take the role, please?
Inspector Diaz.
Yes.
Inspector Walker.
Yes.
Inspector Lallaberty.
Yes.
Inspector Aaron.
Yes.
Inspector Felton.
Yes.
Chair McClellan.
Yes.
That's six yeas.
And that is approved. Quality in action tonight. We'll have Dr. Webb introduce our guests.
Good evening. We are very fortunate tonight to have our principal at Capoja with us. And he has brought a number of special guests with him. So Principal Terry Brito is online with us. And he's going to highlight some of the special features of their distance learning program at Capoja. Mr. Brito, you want to take it away?
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Lisa, I'm wondering if Anne Marie can present a screen just while I'm introducing folks? And then she'll stop presenting her screen so you can present yours. So why don't we give Lisa just a second? So what you're seeing on your screen there is Ms. Anne Marie's class. And I've brought a couple of representatives from her class tonight to talk a little bit about what it means to be distant learners. So, good evening to school board members, Dr. Webb, and the South St. Paul community. There's been much conversation recently about distant learning and how difficult it is to engage students in this digital world. This undoubtedly can be very true. The difficulty many of our families have connecting from home and keeping their children motivated to learn is real. Yet, there are many, many bright spots that we're seeing. And they continue to emerge from the good work that South St. Paul staff is doing. We refer to the spring as emergency learning, where we had to create a new system of education for our kids and our teachers on the fly. Many of our distant learning teachers have continued to improve their craft. And tonight, I'd like to share with you some of those really bright spots. And so instead of me talking, we brought a couple of fifth grade students who exemplify behaviors of highly motivated distant learners. They're also joined by their fifth grade teacher, Ms. Anne Marie White, who also exemplifies a staff member who has accepted this challenge of educating from a distance and has provided our students with a rigorous and engaging digital experience. So tonight, we're here to just have a conversation with you. I'm facilitating a few questions with my guests here tonight as they share with you what life is like as distant learners. So Ms. Anne Marie, if we could have you stop sharing your screen and then turn on your camera. And I will introduce Ms. Valentina. She is on the screen at the bottom there. And Valentina is a new student to us this year. She went to a private school last year, and she actually lives in Cottage Grove this year. But she has some pretty amazing reflections as to the first few months of the school year that she's going to share with you tonight. And I think my next guest needs no introduction. It is Israel, but I think you know him as Bubba. And Bubba is going to share his reflections as well, along with Ms. Anne Marie, who's up on the top row there. So you can ask questions throughout, or you can wait until the end, if you have any, okay? So I just thought up a few questions that I think you're all thinking about. Hold on. Guys, what do you enjoy most about distance learning? We'll start with Valentina.
I enjoy most how we can all laugh at each other and play with each other and not get hurt.
Great, thank you. Bubba, how about you? What do you enjoy most about distance learning?
Sorry, I have to go into a different room. I can still hear the echoing. Okay, much better. I enjoy about, oh, we play lots of games and how such good friends we are. And yeah, that's, yeah, that's about it.
Yeah.
We're just great.
And Ms. Anne Marie, you also have a dual role in the district. You're our media tech specialist too, so she has a high interest in digital learning. But what have you enjoyed most with your students?
I really feel like I've had this kind of slow evolution with distance learning because we had the spring and then I taught summer school. So I got the taste of, you know, doing full synchronous then. And now it's like all in right this fall. And I just love the community that we've still been able to build online. It's been really powerful and the connections with my kids every day are my favorite thing.
It's amazing. Even the class photo that you have, and I know there's another teacher that reached out to you today who's now creating this class photo, but all of those are avatars that kids created of themselves too. So little things like that build community. And they create kind of a fun atmosphere. And you have to do those things when you're learning online, right? You have to be super creative. So Bubba, I'm going to go to you next, but can you share a fun thing that maybe you learned during distance learning?
The math, we've been doing lots of math and I'm usually not really that good at math. And it's just been fun with the math. Ms. Emery has done a great job teaching math.
You, actually, there was a quote from you that said, "You learned that mute can be your best friend sometimes too." So you can talk to yourself and think things out and not bother anybody. So I thought that was kind of funny. Valentina, how about you? A fun thing you learned during distance learning?
I thought distant learning would be a struggle, but with everyone, we help each other. And now I understand math more and different learning skills.
Ms. Anne Marie.
I have learned like so many different tech skills and ways to engage students than I ever have before. I've also learned that like, if anything, and I'm pretty energetic in the classroom, but I have to be even as, if not more energetic over a screen. So that's been really interesting that I've been, I've learned that I'm just as tired sitting in front of a screen as I am running around a classroom all day. So that's been interesting.
It's a whole different amount of energy that you spend even online for the three to four hours a day, right? Valentina, anything that has surprised you about your time as a distance learner?
How fast the year is going by.
How about you, Bubba?
How responsible everybody is and how open-minded everybody is.
What do you, can you talk a little bit about being responsible online? What does that look like in a digital world, Bubba?
That Ms. Emery can trust us if she puts us out in small groups or if she lets us work on our own and that she can trust that we'll be doing our own work and not fooling around.
How about you, Ms. Anne Marie? What's surprised you?
Well, it's been really interesting. The first few weeks, we didn't have breakout rooms, right? Now that feature has finally come available on Google Meets. And it's been so incredible to see how these kiddos just like take, like Bubba said, such responsibility. They go into breakout room and they get such quality work done and come back and just seeing them make these connections and collaborate so well is really exciting since we're all apart.
Yeah, it's hard enough teaching collaboration when kids are in the same room together, right? So just an added layer of getting three to four screens together on a screen, right? And teaching collaboration with a whole new set of skills. So quite amazing. So I had to ask this too. What do you miss most about being at school or being at Capoja? And Valentina, this is kind of new for you because you started the year as a distance learner. But what do you miss most about being in school?
I miss mostly talking to friends and engaging with other kids that I don't know and playing at the park.
Yeah, that's tough. How about you, Bubba?
I'm more of the talker person, so I can talk all day long. And with the distance learning, I'm like, whoa, there's nobody here and I can only talk to myself. And that's one of the things that I miss about being at Capoja.
I see a mom on the screen who is nodding furiously. That is true. Anne Marie, what do you miss most? You've done a really nice job creating this community, so.
Oh, thank you. I, yeah, I mean, I never expected a distance learning community to feel as strong and supportive and kind as the room we've, the room we've created this year. But I would have to say like, I still am getting those great connections with my students. I miss those spontaneous moments that happen, you know, in between classes or coming in in the morning or leaving in the afternoon. But I also really miss that face-to-face time with my colleagues.
All right, we have one more for you guys. How do you think being a distance learner now in fifth grade is going to help you later in life? See what nice skills they have? They don't talk until they're called upon in a Google Meet. Valentina, how do you think this is going to help you later on?
I think it's going to help me improve my typing skills and technology skills and learn my home rule and different things that I didn't know.
Lot of typing, yes.
I think it's going to help with when we're in college or high school and we have to be independent and do more work on our own and how we can say, hey, I already did this in fifth grade. Just remember how I was so great at being independent in fifth grade.
What do you think, Ms. White?
I think, yeah, those independent skills and those organizational skills and just kind of those daily study skills, like, okay, I have my space set up. I mean, my materials are here and I know my schedule. All those things that a 10 or 11-year-old normally isn't navigating. And they are, these two are just examples of a full class of kids that are really exemplifying what we want in a distance learner.
Yeah, it is really exemplary. And it doesn't happen by magic. It happens with a lot of planning and a lot of preparation and a lot of trial and error. And, you know, it's our goal at Capoja that we're working with our fourth graders in the same way, our third graders. Can you imagine? I was on with kindergarten today. The same amount of kids on the screen that are on this screen right here, it's a different experience, but they're doing it. And more times than not, that they're sitting up in the screen and they're paying attention and they're showing the number of fingers that they're counting to on the screen. Sometimes they're rolling around and playing with their dog. It's just the way it is. But they can do it even as five-year-olds. So although it is not the way we've all designed it, that not the way that we would all want it, this is just a great example of kids and a staff member. And there are so many others who are making the best of a really terrible situation. And they're continuing to learn. So very proud of these three and proud of so many others. And I'll just open it up to anybody who has a comment or maybe further questions for Valentina and Bubba.
I don't see any hands.
I have a question.
Oh, all right.
So, Valentina and Israel. We know that when you were in the physical school, that there were a lot of times where you could get up in between, you know, the sections, sharpen your pencil, kind of move your body, move from one area to the next in the building and move a little bit. What do you do during the day, now that you're distance learning, to kind of, you know, get those wiggles out and make sure that you're still moving your body some?
Go ahead. If you just go ahead and answer. We're not going to call on your names.
Well, I normally go outside with my sisters and I take walks around my house. And I also play with my cats.
Usually I go outside, ride my scooter or my bike. I live right next to some tennis courts, so I go over there and play tennis against the wall for some time.
Plus, you sit on a ball all day and bounce, Bubba. Yeah.
Wendy, did you have something?
Well, I just wanted to comment. I wanted to thank both Bubba and Valentina for being with us here tonight. It's so nice to hear directly from the students that with the distance learning, what they're liking about it, any issues they may have with it. So I just wanted to thank both of you guys for being with us tonight. And one quick question, on a scale of one to 10, how excited are you to get back into the classroom full speed ahead? And we got a 10 from Valentina. Bubba, what you got? Is that a 10? All right. Thank you, guys. Have a safe holiday weekend and you take care. Thank you. I also think another advantage of this for the kids is the learning to be flexible and adaptable. There will be times in your life, you know, when you get older and in college or work, you know, whatever your path takes you, and you're going to have curveballs thrown at you, you know? Things may change at your job. And you're learning now at this age to be able to, you know, return those curveballs and to be flexible and to think about, to use creative problem solving, to think about, you know, different ways that things can be done. So you are learning a skill that I would say most adults don't have. So I think, I think it's great. And the other piece for me is just seeing Valentina's face and Bubba's face. It really makes me miss that connection with kids in the classroom. They're just, they're just awesome. You guys are really great and you make me hopeful for the future. So thank you for joining us tonight.
Did you miss lunch? Okay, all right. Go ahead, Chris.
Just one reflection. When this all started, I didn't really know what it was going to be like and how people were going to feel about it. And to have all of you come on and use words, I've been taking notes here. And fun has come up. And being strong and supportive and kind and building a community. And these are just all the best possible outcomes that we could have hoped for. So I'm so glad to hear that. I'm so glad that all of you have created that atmosphere. And I just want to say thank you so much for doing that and for coming on and then sharing it with us just to let us know, you know, how it's going. It really brings a smile to my face to hear you talk so positively about it.
Thanks, Chris. Dave, any final thoughts?
Well, I always say the kids steal the show and they did again tonight. And I, we are just so proud of you, the students that are here with us tonight, you know, Valentina and Bubba, way to go. We know you are great representatives of your class. We have 3,200 students right now in our district that are all distance learning. So to have two of you as representatives here tonight, we just want to say way to go. And I want to give a shout out to the other 3,200 students that are working through this, working hard at home. It doesn't come without challenge. And we know that you're working through those challenges. And one of the board members talked about, it might have been Anne Marie, just talked about problem solving that our kids are doing. So hats off to all of you, whether you're a teacher with us tonight, students that are with us tonight, all of our staff are doing an amazing job, our school leaders, parents in the community. We've never faced eight months like this before in our history. So I just want to say congratulations and we got to stay at it and stay together. So thank you.
Any other final thoughts, questions?
Anne Marie has one more.
Yeah, I just want to say if anyone ever wants to like witness or observe or experience a distance learning class, you can shoot me an email and I'd be more than happy to give you the link and you could join us for a class anytime.
Thank you. Well, thank you all for spending some of your evening with us. It was, I really enjoyed it. Thank you very much. All right. On with the meeting.
Valentina, you can log off and Bubba can log off. Okay, have a good night, you guys.
Thanks, Terry. Next is the public listening session report. Dr. Webb.
Thanks, Jeff. Just a couple of updates on two listening session requests for tonight. The first request that came in was a community member that wanted to share comments about Central Square. And I was able to reach out to them this afternoon and was able to get their feedback about Central Square. We had a couple of community listening sessions and a few staff listening sessions as well over this past month. And there's still time for you to be able to share your comments about Central Square if you haven't already. So this person, after they had submitted to our board listening session, actually filled out one of the information sheets that we had right at Central Square and completed that also. So we're going to be doing a series of outreach, some mailings to our seniors specifically, our Central Square members here over the course of the next couple of weeks. And we want to continue to hear your voices, to hear about your ideas for the future of Central Square. So that was the first conversation today. And again, I just got additional feedback that we are collecting and compiling into a number of key themes about what our community is saying and what are they recommending for the future of Central Square. So that was first. The second was just another community member and a parent in our district that really wants us to, well, first of all, they celebrated all the work that our teachers and staff and leaders have done to transition our schools this fall. But more than anything, the overarching message from this parent was keep redesigning our schools, keep staying focused on the teams and partnership development, making sure that we are teaming, listening to feedback, gathering it from students, from staff, from families, to continue to redesign, not to just back to what was here a year ago, but to really be redesigning for a better South St. Paul schools into the future. So we had a great conversation. We also got her signed up for other South St. Paul parent committees. So I just wanted to say thank you to those two community members for their comments. We'll stay focused at Central Square. We'll continue to hear feedback about Central Square. As you can imagine, there is budget challenge there and even more so when you have to close your doors in the pandemic. But we'll stay at that and we'll also continue our redesign. One last shout out I would do is when we went into the the distance learning back in March of last year, we did our best to pull together in eight days a really good online package for our kids. Throughout that spring while we were online, there were still many districts around the state printing packets and delivering those packets home to kids. So our pre-planning and preparation over the past number of years paid off last spring. And what we did was good. It wasn't great last spring. This summer, our staff continued to pull together, plan together under a lot of leadership guidance from our principals and directors. We opened this fall with a better, I call it kind of an iPhone 2 version of distance learning. And now, just as we're turning the page into the beginning of December, we are now at really an iPhone 3 level. And just, we really have rolled out improvements at Lincoln Center, at Capoja, in the middle and the high school in all the ways that we do distance learning. So I'm just proud of all of our teams within the district to keep designing. It's not perfect. It's an iPhone 3 version. And we have to keep improving and we appreciate all the parent feedback, student feedback, and also our staff in building what we have today. So that's our listening session update for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Webb. And next is the superintendent's update.
All right, we have a PowerPoint for you for a couple of minutes here. So our superintendent update for November 23rd is as follows. When we started the year, we highlighted that at any point during the year, we could be in one of these three phases, in-person with all kids, hybrid learning, or in-distance learning. As I mentioned just a couple of minutes ago, we now have 3,200 students, all in distance learning due to the increase in positivity rates for COVID in our community and in our county. Go ahead. We have a number of highlights from around the district. Here are a couple of shots from students working at home and even our staff in distance learning. Here's one of our teachers and a first grader reading a little bit of, "I do so like it," eggs and ham. Thank you, thank you, Sam I Am, a Lincoln Center first grader, just reading through Green Eggs and Ham online with Ms. Schubert. If you walk the halls at Capoja Elementary, which is pretty tough to do today when we're in distance learning, they built this unity quilt. And this quilt was built by individual students with a color pattern for their grade level. And when you look down the hallway, you can see every grade level contributing to this one huge hallway-long quilt. So just a shout out to the art teacher at Capoja and your leadership to pull this together to show a sign of whether we're together or apart, we always have to pull together through our art. Thank you. Even our South St. Paul Foundation was transitioning to a distance walkathon this year. So students raised funds, they met their pledge, went, walked five miles and tried to make sure that they held up their end of the bargain. And then they were able to take their pledge money and donate straight to the classroom for their classroom activities this year. Just another creative way our foundation was hard at work. A real important update regarding our meal program is that we want to make sure that you know that throughout this distance learning portion of the pandemic, we are going to continue to encourage you to pick up meals at our secondary and at Lincoln Center in Capoja. So our times and dates are right on the screen here. And so starting November 30th, Monday and Thursday, 3:30 to 5:30 PM, and Tuesday and Friday, 11 to 1 at the secondary are your meal pickup times. At Lincoln and Capoja, Tuesdays and Fridays, 11 to 1 is your pickup time. So we just want to make sure that everyone on screen knows that these are the set times at the that these are the set times at the set locations and we want to make sure that every kid is fed during the pandemic. So this is a piece that we're working really hard on, uh, in the district and we really need your family's help. We ask all families to complete an educational benefits form. If your family hasn't, we're asking that you take a few minutes, complete the form, and we want to make sure that everyone is getting that turned in and submitted so we can make sure that we are fully funding our schools and activities here in our district. Uh, many of you will receive a mailing, uh, in, in the upcoming weeks. If you get that mailing, we want to make sure that, uh, will tell us that you haven't yet filled out your forms. We want to make sure you get the form filled out, get a return to South St. Paul schools. You can also still go online and get the form filled out if you'd prefer to do that. But by completing the application, you can be eligible for a number of the things that you see on the screen. Uh, so we just want to give a shout out to any parent that hasn't filled out their form yet this year to do so in the next couple of weeks. We have a number of upcoming events as well. We want to make sure that, um, uh, throughout the Thanksgiving break, November twenty-fifth through twenty-seventh, you know that we have no school. And also on a staff development day, end of the trimester day, December fourth, there's no school on that teacher planning day as well. I think that's it for tonight. So yeah, trimester two begins December seventh. And then in search of our materials and minutes, you can follow this tree diagram to get all the information about our board meetings. And we'll go back to you, Jeff.
Thank you, Dr. Webb. Next is, uh, our consent items, which includes financial claims and staffing. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Lisa, will you take the role?
Inspector Aaron?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Walker?
Yes.
Inspector Lala Birdie?
Yes.
And Chair McClellan?
Yes.
That's six yeas.
Thank you. Those are approved. Uh, we have no policy to review. Next is the approved approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the first series of budget revisions for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Aaron Bushburger, you want to take this one?
Yeah, thank you, Chair McClellan, and good evening, Dave and School Board. Uh, I did a flipped presentation, uh, regarding the first budget revisions, but we thought it would be uh, helpful if I just kind of did a quick overview, uh, so the public could hear some of these details as well. So, uh, with that, I think Lisa's going to drive here and, uh, I'll just go through the, the PowerPoint here. Uh, I will mention that, uh, these budget revisions, uh, as mentioned on the, the cover page, did go uh, in front of the finance committee, uh, at their November eighteenth meeting, uh, and there haven't been any changes, uh, since that time. So, um, ready to go here. Uh, so just kind of, uh, to just take one step back, uh, we are, uh, in the middle of kind of three different, uh, fiscal years here. So you can see on the left-hand side in the blue there, the two thousand nineteen, twenty audit. So that is scheduled to be brought to the board at the December fourteenth meeting. So that'll be coming up here in a couple of weeks. In the middle, in the green is kind of where we're at. Uh, we're a little backwards in the steps here, but, uh, the, uh, we are revising, uh, the two thousand twenty, twenty-one budget. Uh, and that's obviously before you tonight for your approval. And then, uh, once we get all of that information, uh, we start building, uh, what the built, uh, budget projections look like for two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two. Uh, and that has typically started, uh, in January and we'll, we'll plan on keeping, uh, a similar timeline as we move forward here. Regarding the, the budget revisions that are in front of you tonight, uh, we are proposing, uh, budget revisions in the general fund as well as the Community Education Fund. Uh, we do have two other funds, uh, that we have budgets for, the Food Service Fund and the Debt Service Fund. Uh, and we currently don't have revisions, uh, for those tonight. Uh, however, uh, in the Food Service Fund, we will expect to bring revisions, uh, at some point in the future here. So really focused on the general fund and Community Education Fund for tonight. Uh, this next slide shows, uh, the original budget. On the top line, you can see, uh, we had, uh, budgeted a net operating deficit of nine hundred and ninety thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars. So that's on the far right-hand side. Uh, the culmination of the first budget revisions, you can see is an additional deficit of about a hundred thousand dollars, uh, leaving us with a revised, uh, budget deficit of approximately one million dollars, just slightly more than one million dollars. Uh, and I'll go, uh, through some of the details right now, uh, as far as what's making up, uh, those proposed first budget revisions. So the first item is a decrease in enrollment. Uh, so if you recall from the October enrollment report, uh, from a K twelve enrollment perspective, we were pretty consistent, uh, with what we had budgeted. However, uh, we do know that our voluntary pre-kindergarten or our VPK enrollment has decreased. And so we'll know how, we will know we have a, a decrease in, uh, state funding that comes with, uh, that decrease in VPK enrollment. Then secondly, uh, we have a decrease in our other revenue. So, uh, things like student activities, student admissions, student fees. Uh, we know there will be a decrease there. Obviously, uh, with our fall, uh, athletics and activities, uh, there was, uh, extremely limited attendance. And so, uh, we know from a revenue standpoint that that will be going down, uh, at least through, uh, our fall season. And then second, we have a decrease in the medical assistance revenue. So, um, that has also been, uh, factored into the decrease uh, in the overall revenue as well. Uh, the next slide, uh, talks about, uh, speaks to the decrease in expenditures. Uh, so there's just kind of four things I want to, want to cover here. Uh, the first are what I'm calling normal changes in our current staffing costs. So if, uh, an employee takes a different insurance plan or, um, a teacher gets a lane change, we try to, uh, reflect that as accurately as we can. And so, uh, we'll make those, uh, normal changes throughout the course of the year. The second is we have a decrease in overall staffing costs. Uh, we know we started the school year, uh, with less staff than we typically do. So we're trying to reflect that as well. Uh, we have a decrease in substitute costs. Uh, we're able to allocate some of these costs to, um, uh, the CARES Act dollars that we received, and I'll talk about that in a minute. So we have there. Uh, and then finally, uh, also factored in is an increase in unemployment costs. So, uh, as we know, we had a decrease in overall staffing levels heading into the year. Uh, however, that does cost, um, cause an increase, uh, in unemployment costs for the district. Uh, two other pieces I'd like to talk about for the general fund. Uh, so we do have, um, we are proposing a transfer to the Community Education Fund, uh, to support our emergency care program. And I'll, uh, talk to that in one minute here. And then, uh, the second bullet is the coronavirus relief funds or CRF funds, um, as part of the CARES Act. Uh, we did receive, uh, substantial federal funding to, um, pay for any additional COVID-related costs. Um, however, we do get, uh, funding for that. So overall, there's, uh, no change to the bottom line for the district. So that's, uh, the general fund. You can see, uh, now with that revised, um, revenue and expenditure number, uh, we are projecting a fund balance of about, uh, just over three point seven million dollars, uh, or about eight and a half percent. And so that's where we're at right now. Um, as I previously mentioned, uh, we will have the audit coming in a couple of weeks. Uh, and so we did, uh, we are expecting to see, um, some positive news from an audit perspective. And so, uh, this number will, will continue to be updated, uh, as we bring the audit results as well. The second area, uh, is the Community Education Fund. So similar to how we, uh, presented the general fund, uh, you can see the original budget there had a deficit of thirty-two thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars. Uh, after budget revisions, uh, we are projecting a deficit of forty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. So, uh, not a significant change. However, there is, uh, a general fund portion that's coming into play here that I just mentioned. Uh, the next slide, uh, so when we built the Community Education Budget, we really built it on, uh, what I'm calling a normal school year, for lack of a better term. Uh, so we assume that all programming would, uh, kind of continue, um, as it otherwise normally would. Uh, however, um, now we know that, uh, we are either eliminating or reducing, uh, a significant portion of the community education programming, uh, including Kids' Choice uh, and other, uh, adult and youth enrichment opportunities. Uh, I know Jean and her staff are working hard to present, uh, or, um, to offer different opportunities, uh, where they can. Uh, it just obviously won't be to the extent, uh, that it has been in, in previous years. And then secondly, uh, we are, uh, required to provide our emergency care program. Uh, and so that comes with an additional cost to the district, uh, and not necessarily, uh, an additional funding source. And so you can see there, we do have an additional cost of about three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars to operate this program. Uh, fortunately, we were able to allocate some of these costs, uh, to the coronavirus relief fund dollars that I just talked about. Uh, however, we can't allocate all of it. So just a portion of that will be covered, uh, leaving a pretty significant deficit in the Community Education Fund. And so that's why you'll see the proposed transfer from the general fund to two, for, in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars, uh, to offset those additional, uh, emergency care, uh, program costs. So then the next slide just shows, uh, the projected Community Education Fund balance. You can see at the end of the year, uh, we are projecting a fund balance of just over sixty thousand dollars. And so obviously keeping a close eye, uh, on the Community Education Program, uh, in the fund. Uh, obviously, um, you know, the emergency care program is, is something that was required. Uh, and so it's causing, uh, some financial strain, uh, on the community education. So that, uh, summarizes, uh, the proposed, uh, budget revisions. The next steps kind of in this finance process, um, we'll bring the audit results, uh, to you, as I mentioned, on December fourteenth. Uh, we'll also bring, uh, the proposed pay two thousand twenty-one levy, uh, for your approval and we'll have uh, the truth and taxation hearing at that time. Uh, and then, as I mentioned, in January, uh, we'll begin, uh, the process all over again to, to start planning for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So, um, obviously, given, uh, the current financial, uh, condition of, of the state and, and the country, we know, uh, we're going to have challenges ahead. And so, uh, we'll be prepared with, with as much information as you need uh, to try to report in January so we can, uh, begin planning. So, so with that, I can, uh, answer any questions you have, uh, about the proposed budget revisions. And Dave, I didn't know if you had anything to add or not, but that kind of concludes what I had.
My, my, uh, add would be just your incredible work to manage all of the federal and, uh, state changes. And, uh, just to shout out really your budget management in the district, Aaron. Uh, and thanks for just boiling it down so clearly for our community tonight. So, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hey, this is the third time I've seen this, Aaron, so I've got it down pat, so.
Good.
Lisa, will you take the role?
Inspector Walker?
Yes.
Inspector Lala Birdie?
Yes.
Inspector Aaron?
Yes.
And Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
And Chair McClellan?
Yes.
That's six yeas.
Okay, that is approved. Next is the approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the acceptance of gifts resolution. Lisa, would you read the resolution?
Be it resolved that the School Board of South St. Paul Public Schools, Special School District Number Six, accept the following donations as indicated in the detailed background list. An iPad donation to the Adult Basic Education Program from Francine Cosgrove Anderson, and the iPad will be used for classroom use.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Lisa, will you take the role?
Inspector Walker?
Yes.
Inspector Lala Birdie?
Yes.
Inspector Aaron?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Chair McClellan?
Yes.
That's seven, or excuse me, six yeas.
That is approved. Finally, tonight, we have board members report committee updates and where have you seen a passion? We'll start with Wendy.
I just, I just want to say, uh, thank you again, the students and Ms. White for, for being with us tonight and sharing their experiences with the, the distance learning. Um, and I just want to wish everybody a safe Thanksgiving. As we all know, it won't be the same as we would like to have it, as it normally would be. So everybody have a safe holiday. And let's just all stay together and remember we're all in the same boat. Let's be safe. So, thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Bill?
Yeah, I'd like to give a shout out to all the coaches, um, for the fall sports and the wonderful job they did of keeping everything together and to, uh, keep participating. I know it's been, uh, a long haul, but it was well worth it from a South St. Paul residents' view. And I'd like to wish you and all the people a happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Bill. Nikki?
Nothing at this time.
Linda, Linda, you want to take the Equity Alliance too? Committee report?
Sure. Um, uh, I forgot that we were doing, uh, committee updates too. So I did attend, uh, the latest Equity Alliance meeting with Jeff. I was a silent partner, um, in the peanut gallery, although I wasn't so silent. Um, uh, but they were really, they were so great. They were very welcoming, um, very sad to see Jeff go. He is um, a great presence there, great kind presence that was, um, said over and over again. And, um, so they're really sad to see him go. But they were very welcoming to, uh, to have me come starting in January. Um, and they are, they are struggling. I think Jeff had mentioned that at the last check-in. Um, you know, it's very difficult and we just had our budget, uh, we just had Aaron talk about our budget and it's, you know, it's, it's very sad, um, all across these agencies that are trying to stay afloat, that provide services. Um, and a lot of their services are, you know, in-person services. Um, so a lot of the meeting was talking about how we can, um, generate some ideas to, to keep them going and the support that we have for them, the, the great support, um, that we have for what they're doing, the advocacy that they're providing in our schools with equity, um, leadership training they have for youngsters. And so it, it was a very difficult meeting, um, to hear. Uh, but also I think one where I always love it when people are generating ideas. So I'm excited to be a part of it going forward.
Thank you. You're two awesome. I know you will.
Thanks.
Anything else?
No, nothing else.
Chris, finally, least but not last.
Uh, I'll just echo the happy Thanksgiving greetings and, uh, that's all I have for tonight.
Okay, thank you. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Lisa, will you take the role?
Inspector Lala Birdie?
Yes.
Inspector Aaron?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Walker?
Yes.
Chair McClellan?
Yes.
That's six yeas, that's six fifty-one.
Thank you. We are adjourned. Thank you, Glenn.
Good night, everyone.
Night.